Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Meeting of March 22nd, 2018. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I can't hear you. Oops. All right, I first like to announce that the Treasures Report for February 2018 is available in the business office. Now, I know we're going to be moving on to Pride in Putnam Valley, which is, I say everything's my favorite thing, but it truly is my favorite thing about being on the board. But before we do, when you have family that achieve something great, you like to acknowledge it. And two of our family members here on the board, Erin Peterson and Sarah Broas, achieved magnificent results this past Saturday at the Science Fair. So, we would like to give them just a little award. This is not the fancy Pride in Putnam Valley, we're going to do this, but this is just from us celebrating people that we work with so closely. Our hearts are bursting with pride, and we can't imagine what their mothers must be feeling at this moment, so, recap, but we... There's really a lot of nice things about being on the board, and one of them certainly is pride in Putnam Valley. So, who's going to take that? Dr. Wills?
I'm going to ask our director to try to...
Oh, turn around.
You need to be taller, Dr. Wills.
Lower, lower.
I'm going to ask our athletic director, Brian Burrow, to present these awards this evening. One of the best parts of our district community, if you will, is this sharing between the high school and the elementary school, the younger kids, the kind of camaraderie, the kind of caring, that our students really love to get involved in, the mentoring that goes on. And so, this is a special night to celebrate this type of behavior, this type of wonderful, caring behavior that we see among our young people as they work with their younger brothers and sisters and their, all of the students in the elementary and middle school.
Thank you, Fran. I'm actually standing in here for Ray Gallagher now. So, he wrote a piece for all of you here that I'm going to read now, and then, at the end, we will call you up, okay? So, this statement is on behalf of Ray Gallagher, Putnam Valley Parks and Recreation Athletics Coordinator. On behalf of the town of Putnam Valley and the PV Parks and Recreation Department, I'd like to inform the Putnam Valley School Board, the PV Administration, its teachers, its student body, and the entire town about a group of young men I am both close to and quite fond of. The young men that stand here before you today are more than worthy of the Pride in Putnam Valley honor to be bestowed upon them this evening. In addition to serving as members of the varsity and junior varsity basketball teams and several others who are simply basketball fanatics, these fine young men donated countless hours of their time through a community service program I initiated six years ago. Normally, we'd have three or four varsity players sign on as basketball coaches in the PV Parks and Rec Youth Hoops Program, but this year, it exploded with just about the entire varsity team signing on to coach upwards of 100 young boys in our community. These coaches were an absolute joy to be around, and this community and school district should be proud of their collective will to improve the skills and sportsmanship of our youth. The parents of the participants raved about the program this season and spoke so highly about the young men before you, and the best part is they have all volunteered to return next season despite having met their community service requirements, some of whom will be doing so for a third straight year. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing all you did this winter. Now, please rise and give these boys the applause and pat on the back they deserve as the pride in Putnam Valley. Yep, come on up, boys, come on up. As they're making their way up here, just as they're making their way up here over into this area right here, come on up, don't be shy.
Wow, there's a lot of them.
From myself, the parent feedback has been absolutely tremendous. The level of sportsmanship and dedication of our young adult community members giving back and sharing their passion with our young students is nothing short of heartwarming and inspiring. And this is truly a goal that we have set for Putnam Valley, for our young adults here, and working, just as Fran said, with our young people, to come back and to pay back everything that they've received from the community. So, thank you very much, boys.
Now, I have your certificates, and, you know, this is another sign of a great team, by the way. Our basketball, our basketball team did so well this year, and we know that part of the reason is the spirit, and that spirit also is reflected in the work that you're doing. So, let's start with the certificates. TJ Brescher. I will just read this certificate so that everyone knows what the certificate says. Pride in Putnam Valley to TJ Brescher to recognize his many hours of volunteer community service with the Putnam Valley Parks and Recreation Youth Basketball Teams. So, here you go, TJ. Adam Supaz. Austin Fabiana. Kevin Gallo. Joe Grabowski. Charlie Gatewood. Brendan Guera. Bobby Crowboth. Ryan Marsh. Riley Nolan. Michael Reichert. Darnell Shillingford. Nick Singer.
Graduate, Nick Magnano and Nick Singer are graduates, but we also wanted to recognize them too, they...
Wonderful. Zach Smith. And Brian Sobek. You make us proud, and you also just give us that feeling, that PV spirit, PV Rising.
Dr. Wills, if I can just say a couple of words, you know, you're not ju-- anybody in this room ever coach, not such an easy job. And you have to not just teach basketball skills, you have to teach sportsmanship, behavior management, listening skills, and then you have to work with the players. Those are just the parents. So, it's a lot to do, and it's a lot of responsibility, and I've talked to a lot of kids that have had you guys as coaches, and they cannot speak highly enough of all of you, so, congratulations.
If you could just take one step back, and then as close as you can, we're always in the process. It's pretty easy, so if you think it's a little mess in the front row, that's good.
They're all agents.
Doesn't make you feel bad.
Here goes the room.
That was just a little bit of a conversation. I didn't mean to speak for anything we'll do later.
I'm going to motion more about ours. Jeremy is, I will. He doesn't, I will.
Jeremy, you may talk more about STEM or FAML, but I just wanted to get that.
I had the science research information. I was going to do science research.
I don't know which one of you was doing science research or reports, but I just wanted to get that, is that okay?
You have it, right? I don't have all these.
I have it all.
Okay. Got quiet in here all of a sudden.
Alex, you should have told them you were next, and they would have stayed.
Well, actually, I think Mrs. Barbara Formley is next, if I recall. The next item is a report on the audit committee, which I believe met about an hour and 15 minutes ago.
Hi, I'm Barbara Formley. I just have to say, watching you congratulate these kids and then these young men, when there's, I will tell you that it didn't just start now. I knew some of those children and these kids when they were kids and not young adults, and it started a long time ago, this sense of dedication to their work, their love, their generosity of spirit, everything, just, you know, started a long ago. It started at home, and then it built up. Anyway, okay, I'm going to try to read my notes from the audit committee meeting. We did a phone conversation with Dave Moran of Acume Partners. He usually comes to the board meeting to do this presentation, but he gave us the presentation over the phone. He went over last year's information technology audit. We had a question, but he sort of preempted the question, that our score, which is in the middle, medium risk range, didn't change even though our district did everything that was recommended by Acume Partners. And so, what he wanted to say was that we should be really proud of the fact that we maintained the status quo, that we improved our controls, but daily, sometimes hourly, there are new threats and new challenges, and the ongoing diligence is required, but that also keeps our risk level at, in the medium range. He started to talk about the audit plan for 1718. There were two areas of medium risk that he could have looked at. One was budget, finance, and accounting, and one was revenues and accounts receivable. The budget, finance, and accounting was done in 1415, whereas the revenues and accounts receivable hadn't been done since '09-10. So, he went with the recommendation that, that Acume Partners looks at our revenues and accounts receivable in terms of the audit plan for this year. The budget committee supports that recommendation. We think that that was a, that's a really good way to go, and it's something that needs to be looked at. He did ask me to tell you that he will do a combined presentation in June. He will go over like how he decided on, on that revenues and accounting, accounts receivable, and then the results of the audit in June. So, he will present those to you in June. Questions? I hope he's not asking you really. Boys, we'll have to turn it over to Jill and Guy. Good?
Yeah, I think we're good, thank you. And that's right, and we know we could always find him if we have to. Jill, as long as you understand it.
Me too.
Okay. The third item is information regarding updated website to meet accessibility requirements.
So, I asked Alex and Michael if they would help prepare a presentation to explain something that, I must admit, as a former Director of Technology, makes my head hurt just thinking about it. So, after a constant barrage of emails from myself to them, asking them if we were in compliance, Alex was kind enough to come by one day and show me all the work he's been doing behind the scenes. In speaking with colleagues around the, around the county, many school districts went out and hired outside firms to run scans, to assure compliance, and to, in many cases, build new websites. When I shared these resources with our staff here in Putnam Valley, Alex told me that he could do all that stuff. So, what Alex has been doing behind the scenes is essentially building a brand-new website and a new platform in parallel with our existing website, and that new platform that he's building it on has all the required accessibility features built in. I was very impressed by what he shared with me, and I thought it was important that he be able to share it with the board and the larger community to know that we're being proactive in terms of making sure our content is accessible to all community members, and really as a way to give kudos to the hard work that's been going on behind the scenes. So, thank you, guys, and I'll turn it over to Alex.
All right, thank you. Just waiting for this slide to come up. Okay, I'm Alex Goffman, as Jeremy said. I'm the district web developer, and I'm going to be talking today about our new website and accessibility. So, why are we making changes to our website? One word, accessibility. And what is accessibility? In regards to the web, accessibility is the practice of designing your website to be usable by as many people as possible regardless of disability or special needs. And we are required by law to meet the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines Standards 2.0, also known as WCAG 2.0. So, let's take a look at the requirements of WCAG 2.0. Perceivable. Provide text alternatives for non-text content. Provide captions and other alternatives for multimedia. Create content that can be presented in different ways, including by assistive technologies, without losing meaning. So, for example, if a user has a smartphone, a tablet, a screen reader, they should be able to access all of our content. We need to make it easier for users to see and hear content. Understandable. Text needs to be readable and understandable. Content needs to appear and operate in predictable ways. Content should be presented in a way to help users avoid and correct mistakes. Operable. All functionality should be available using just a keyboard. Users should have enough time to read and use content. Content should not contain anything that can cause seizures, and users should be helped to navigate and find content. Robust. The website should be compatible with current and future user tools. Can we make our current website fully WCAG 2.0 compatible? Yes, but starting a new website has many advantages. So, why start from the ground up? We can use new backend technology, and what that means is that we can have better compatibility with future technologies, including assistive tools and smart devices. We can have better security. We can have scalability, which means the website has room to grow and change. Also, by starting from the ground up, we can use a platform that has mobility built in, not retrofit. We can rethink pages or content that may no longer be needed. For example, we still have a page with driving directions, and obviously, we don't need that in the era of smartphones and Google Maps. And in my opinion, the biggest benefit of starting from the ground up is we can implement a modern content management system, or CMS. So, what is a content management system? Smart content management is equal to greater accessibility. That's why we use a content management system. Our new site utilizes WordPress, and you've probably heard of it because it runs on 28.9% of the entire internet and 58.7% of all websites that use a known CMS. So, why WordPress? All content is broken down by category, date, and author. All content is automatically archived and perma-linked. All content has a role and hierarchy, and without going into the technical details of what that means, the advantage is that it helps us with searchability and navigation. All content lives separately from the website's structural elements, so essentially, what this means for us is that content is flexible. The texts and images we present, the texts and images will present themselves correctly even if the entire look of the website changes. So, if we ever have to change the whole thing or one thing, the content and images just reappear where they need to be. We don't have to worry about other things around the website, around the words. There's potential for delegation because our CMS, WordPress, is all web-based. There's no need for FTP or HTML editing software. And because of the large user base of WordPress, there's quicker adoption of new web technologies. So, one day, there will probably be a WCAG 3.0, and utilizing WordPress will have a leg up on these new technologies. So, let's look at the highlights of what we did to our new website to provide greater Our website changes in layout to appear correctly on mobile phones and tablets. We have a responsive search engine. We have keyboard navigation with the option to skip to content and skip to navigation. And I'll show you what that means in the demo. We have high-contrast text and selectable contrast options. We have breadcrumb navigation, which I will go into the demo. We make use of headings on pages for structure, and this is important for screen readers for determining the content and the order of a webpage. We have no images of text without accompanying captions. All of our images have alt text and descriptions. All of our links are identified by an underline, and this is very important for people who have difficulty with color perception. We make minimal use of images for decoration because decorative images can confuse screen readers. And we have a higher Site Improve Accessibility Score that is above the average for education, the industry average. And what is Site Improve? It's a software and browser extension that analyzes and tracks the accessibility of your website, finds potential issues, and gives you a score to use as a benchmark for measuring the impact of changes to your site. All right, it's time for the little demo. All right, so this is our new website right here. It probably feels familiar to you because the layout is similar to our current website. Up here, we have the navigation for the schools and the departments. Over here, we have district-level navigation items. Right here, we have an excerpt from Dr. Wills' last message, and this will automatically always show the latest message. Now, if I click on the title of this message or "Read More," it'll take me to the full And right here, this is what I was referring to earlier as breadcrumb navigation. So, from the district page, we went through superintendence messages, and now we're on the title of this message. If I click to the superintendence message, it takes me to an archive of all the, sorry, it takes me to an archive of the superintendence messages. Over here, we have a couple photos from our school. If I click on these, it'll take me to the full photo page. Sorry, the trackpad's a little... So, here's a photo. And just as with the superintendence messages, if I click on the last navigable item right here, District Photos, it'll take me to a category known as District Photos where, that contains the archive of the district photos that will appear on the homepage. So, the great thing about a content management system is that everything archives itself. There's no need to worry about losing things that have been on the front page because it's always going to self-archive. Down here, we have the latest Board of Education meeting, which we can play right from the We have the archive of Board of Education meetings. Loading.
Alex, I might resign if I see myself on a phone, so, take your time.
I'll just skip that. And down here, we have some important information that we want to appear on our webpage. Now, if we go back up, oh, well, now it wants to show you. This is the Board of Education Archives page.
What's he doing?
Sorry about that.
I have no idea.
Right now, the website is running from a testing server, so, once it's our live webpage, it'll be faster, more responsive. So, over here, you'll notice we have a search bar. I'm just going to do a quick demo. Let's say I'm a parent, and I'm looking for free and reduced lunch info. So, type in some keywords, and it'll bring up a list of results. I can click here to "More Results," or I can just click right from the search box. So, search is a big part of accessibility. Down here, we have our archive of videos for Inside Putnam Valley. You can watch them all here, or you can click on the episode title. It'll take you directly to the one video. If you'd like to share this, you could always just copy the URL from here. Over here, we have more announcements, our budget info, our tax payment options, and just other various items. And what I was saying before about images with captions, this right here, anonymous alerts, it's an image, but right here, it also says anonymous alerts, and this is for screen readers because a screen reader, when you, when it sees an image, it doesn't know that there's text on it. So, something we have to avoid is pictures with text. That's a fairly big thing that we have to avoid. And down at the bottom, we have our basic footer with our mission statement and our contact information. So, this is the homepage. I'm just going to go to the high school page. High school page. And here's an alert box that we've all seen on the website for the last few days. We have used 11 emergency snow days. I'm just going to close this. The great thing about these alert boxes is that I can decide to put them on every single page or just certain pages. I could change the way they look, I can change the way the font appears, I can change the color, or I'll just close it. All right, this is the high school page. Very familiar to those who've used our current website because this layout is pretty much the same. Instead of having just one photo, we have multiple photos. Instead of having just one photo, we have multiple photos that will self-archive. They'll display about six photos from the previous days. Over here, we have a message from Sandra. If I click on the date of the message, it'll take me to the full message page, and similarly to with the other archived items, if I click up here, it'll show me an archive. And it says, "Posted by Sandra." Even if I want to click on Sandra's name, it'll show me everything posted by Sandra. So that's one of the advantages of a content management system. This is what we're talking about. And down over here, we have our Google Calendar. And we have some social media links. I'm going to go back to the district page to do another little demo. I talked earlier about keyboard navigation, what that is. So for people who are unable to use mice and they will use keyboard navigation, so if I press Tab, I have an option to skip down directly to the content. Alright? And let me just refresh that. If I press Tab twice, I have an option to skip directly to the navigation, or I can just bypass it by holding down Tab. This is something that we probably have never even thought about, but for people that use keyboards to navigate, this is really important. So as you can see, as I'm pressing Tab, we have highlights around different links in logical order. And everything on the website, everything that you see can be clicked on, can be gone through with just a keyboard. The other thing I want to show you is, up here where it says "Contrast," this is going to look a little strange to us. I can put on a night mode. I can put on other high-contrast options. Now, this might look strange to us, but for certain people that need it, these are very important, and these help with our Site Accessibility Score.
Exactly. I think one of the important parts about this is that, and really the most functional, is for people who are blind, visually impaired, or deaf are able to access our website using what's called a screen reader. Literally, it's a screen that you just literally will go through everything. You just press on it, and what Alex is showing you is that it changes everything to either be able to read it to you if you're blind or visually impaired, and if you're deaf, you can use different backgrounds and access it in different ways. I think that is really, or even for people who have profound reading disabilities, really being able to click on it and having it be able to read and having the same level of access to information that the rest of, you know, people do.
And is there a translation too?
There will be a translation. Right now, this website, our testing website, is seen as a totally different website, and our Google Translator is registered to the first website. So as soon as our transition happens, the translator will go over to this website, so the same way it works on our current website. The other thing I want to show you is, if I increase the text size, let's say, one of the components of the WCAG 2.0s, you should be able to increase the text size by 200% and the website is still functional. So right now, even though the text is huge for us, for some people, this is important, and you don't lose anything. It just shifts. Everything is still here. So now, mobile. Right now, our current website doesn't look that great on mobile. It doesn't change. If I shrink the screen to what the resolution would be of a mobile phone right here, you can see that these elements rearrange themselves. Our large menu collapsed, and we can use it this way. There's no pinching and zooming in and looking around because everything rearranged itself. You just have to scroll down. So no matter what screen you're using, the content will rearrange itself to meet your Alright, that's pretty much the demo. I'd like to acknowledge the people that helped out. Michael Lee for his networking expertise and Site Improve integration. Matt Brady for his PHP expertise and WordPress assistance. Pat Bellino for facilitating technology. Dr. Jeremy Luff for compliance planning. And Dan Mahoney for web video accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
When do you believe this will be implemented?
I can probably go live in about a month.
It's important to emphasize, I think, that we are well ahead of many districts, and our score, I believe, was something like, was it 80-something or 70-something?
Our, the industry benchmark was 61%, so and our score was 63 on the old site.
Yes, we were above the benchmark.
But on this site currently, in the demo phase, it's 76. That's with all the non-work, the links that don't really go anywhere because it's still a demo, and some links still point to old portions of the website. When it's fully live, the score will be higher.
And I think what's important too for the district is that there are penalties for districts that, or any organization, a public organization, that is not compatible in this way and accessible. And we're also leading the way with our programs to support people with special needs, and I think this is another example of that.
Thank you.
And even people of reduced financial means, who may be new arrivals to this country, who aren't, may not be fully literate in English, but can use a screen reader and have it translated or even just have it read to them, even if they speak fluently.
Yeah, and the other issue is, certain people have caps on their data, and one thing that I didn't even discuss on our website is, our website can detect when you're on a slower connection. It'll reduce the size of images.
Oh, wow, that's great.
This is something called Google AMP, Google Mobile Accelerated Mobile Platform, and it just runs in the background. We don't have to do anything. It detects what kind of browser you're using, and instead of loading a 1-megabyte image, it'll compress it down to 100 kilobytes for you. So, and that's another accessibility, you know, option. Thank you.
Alex, what's going to happen with the legacy teacher pages?
The teacher pages that are not Google pages?
As far as, is everything going to be optimized this way?
No, the Google, the people that have made their pages in Google, and we believe they self-optimize for the web. Anything that was done in iApps, the old iWeb, that would not be optimized.
We're moving right on to our budget presentation.
Good evening. Here tonight again to present our budget for 2018-19, and it's basically going to be, probably, if you've watched, if you're watching again and you were watching last time, it's pretty much the same information that you've already heard, but I need to emphasize that this is an important evening for us to all be here and for us to be presenting the budget and making sure that the information gets out to the community. So, when we start developing the budget, the first, one of the first things we looked at is our enrollment projections for next year. We take into considerations the housing and whether there's any new construction, what our late enrollments looked like in the prior year. We had, last year, about 79 late enrollments after the budget passed, and about 69 students move out to other school districts or just move out of the community. So, it's very difficult to predict. We do take a look at birth rates and whatnot to develop our enrollment for the projections for the following year, and we try to keep in mind maintaining class sizes. And right now, we're looking at an estimate of about 1,600 students, or close to what we have this year, 1,621. So you'll see here, 2016-17, we had about 1,700. In the current year, we have 1,621, and our estimates right now, last week, I believe when we presented the budget the first time, we had a, oops, sorry, a count at that time of kindergarten enrollment at 82. Not sure where we are today with all of the weather and not being here. We don't have an updated number for tonight, but we will as we get closer to adopting the budget. I don't, there's a couple more meetings before that, or I think one at least, but, you know, we'll keep changing this, and this will be living document on our website. So right now, this is what we're looking at, about 1,600 students for next year. And again, this does not include students that are sent out of the district for education instruction. The next thing I usually take a look at, and when the information becomes available, is our tax cap calculation. I know basically what other types of revenue were coming in, but I need to go through the calculation. We've never actually gone through the calculation in public, and everybody hears about the 2% increase and what does it really mean. So I'd like to step us through the calculation one step at a time. We start with a prior year's tax levy. So for that, it would be our current year, 2017-18, $35,775,821. To that, we have, apply a tax-based growth factor, which is determined by the Department of Taxation. It's a regional factor, and that is the website that you can go to if you want to learn more about how they develop that. Ours is 1, which means there's no increase in that number, so it's 35,775,821. We're allowed to, or part of the calculation, the next step, is to reduce it by the prior year's capital exclusion, which is also known as our capital debt, which is $2,163,825. We get to add back our prior year's building aid, $1.2 million, 1,239,074, and that is also based on what the capital debt is. And this leaves us with our prior year's exclusions of $924,751. Our result is the prior year's levy less our exclusions, $34,851,070. To that number, we apply what is known as the CPI, or 2% for this year. So that's where our 2% comes in. This is the only part of the calculation where the 2% exists. Last year, this number was 1.26, and the prior year was .12. So the CPI changes from year to year, and that's the number that we have to use. So applying 2% to that number would be $35,548,091, and this number is known as our tax levy limit before our current year's exclusions. So just like we took off last year's exclusions, we get, we add back the current, the 18-19 exclusions. So here we have the debt for 2018-19, our capital exclusion, $2,601,664. From that, we take away the building aid that's expected on that debt, $1,372,344. And we are also able to add the retirement system contribution rate when it's in excess of 2%. So in other words, the retirement contributions on salaries, this year, the rate is at .83%. So that contribution rate cannot be added to the local share. We have to find it somewhere else in the budget to be supported, and it's at $243,000. Our allowable exclusions for the current year's tax levy, for the projected year's tax levy is $1,229,220, and leaving us with an allowable tax levy limit of 2.799%, or The proposed levy that you'll see in the budget as I present is 36,747,311, which is $30,000 under the allowable cap. And Putnam Valley has been under, or presenting budgets that are under the allowable cap since the inception of the tax cap. And since the levy does remain under the cap, our homeowners will receive a school tax refund check that comes in the fall from the New York State Department of Taxation. It does not come from the school district, and this is not your star. This is in addition to that, and it is pending restriction. So there is an income level guideline of $275,000 or less. This is the website where you can find information on that tax relief credit. I recommend that people go there. There's a lot to learn on that website. There's a lot of information. I'm not going to go through everything, but basically, it explains that if you receive basic star and your school district is staying under the tax cap, you will continue to see that tax relief credit coming to you if your income is between $75,000 or less. There's a 28% refund tax relief check coming to you based on the basic star that is in place in the current year. So somewhere between $74 and $377 would be your basic tax relief credit coming back in addition to the star savings. For enhanced star recipients, those are the senior star exemptions. They have a 12% of their enhanced star savings amount. They receive about $3,000 in star savings, so again, their refund would be about $360, $350 coming back to them in the fall. Now, these are star-based numbers for this year, so the star numbers for next year are not yet available. They won't be available until we get the tax rolls in July. So just to review some of the fiscal highlights, since 2012, the district has stayed below the tax cap. Our star-eligible homeowners have received a tax refund every year since the program started because the district remained under the cap. The proposed tax rate that is going to be in place for the upcoming year pending the passage of the budget would be lower than it was four years ago. The district continues to budget thoughtfully and spend the budget in a fiscally responsible manner. The district continues to recognize that the residents are calling for lower taxes, and the district continues to use available resources wisely and share services whenever possible. The property value should continue to increase if quality programs are offered and fiscal responsibility is present. And aggregately, the allowable tax levy limit has been reduced by $3.5 million, as you'll see on this chart. Putnam Valley has taxed below the amount every year that was allowable to them in the tax cap calculation. So you'll see in, throughout the years, from 1314 all the way through 1819 proposal, that aggregately, the tax levy compared to the allowable tax levy is lower by $3.5 million. So the district has a tax levy that's on average below 1% over those seven years. It's .97%. This is a slide based on 628 school districts across New York State, and it's tax cap data that was filed on March 1st of this year. In the blue bar, you'll see what the tax cap CPI was for all districts across the state. That's this top line here, and it's represented by the blue bar. The brick or orange-colored bar here represents the maximum allowable levy increase. That's the average increase that would have been allowed by school districts across the state. The green bar represents the actual proposed levy. Again, this is an average across the state. So on the bottom of this chart, you'll see PVs are Putnam Valley numbers from 2012 all the way through to the current. Again, .97% increase on average over the seven years. In some years, well below what other districts are levying across the state on average, and in some years, you know, not only well below, but in the negative. So, again, lower than 1% on average over seven years, .97%. nine, seven percent. This chart represents our tax rate comparison over the years from two thousand thirteen to the present, and you'll see, again, proposed that the tax levy is estimated lower than it will be, than it was four years ago. And that's based on the two thousand seventeen home assessments. I have nothing else to base it on, but the most current information. Proposed tax rate, again, lower than it was four years ago. It's seventy-two cents higher per thousand dollars of assessment than, than last year. So there could be, on an average home, an increase of less than two hundred and fifty dollars on a home that's valued around three hundred and thirty thousand. That's an average home in Putnam Valley.
That doesn't take, that's, that's the, if I'm looking at the previous slide correctly, that's just slightly, depending on where you are on the, in the income ranges, your star and refund would make it, could, could make it a zero.
Correct. That's true. So another part of our budget that we're going to talk about a little bit is our reclassification of annual debt payment. So this year, we have to move money from our debt service budget to our general fund budget. We will be paying, the amount of debt payments are no longer going to be paid out of the debt service fund, which has no impact on the tax levy. It's purely only a reclassification of where we take the funds from. So the debt service fund budget looks deflated the first year, this year, less one point three million dollars. And the debt payments will be paid, again, like I said, from the general fund budget. There'll be no impact to the tax levy. It's only a reclassification, which is going to make the general fund budget look inflated the first year, one point three million. So it's like having two separate checking accounts. You're just taking it from one, transferring it to another, and paying it out of the general fund. Because we have to pay the money out of the general fund, we have to represent it in the budget lines. Therefore, the budget will look inflated, but it's just moving money from one fund to another. It's not any impact on the tax levy whatsoever. So having said that, our revenue impacts, our budget to budget changes, you'll see that debt reclassification of one point three million. Another area of revenue we are receiving, which isn't much to speak about, is our state aid. We're getting fifty-seven thousand dollars in state aid. It's quite lower than what we normally see in the area of around three hundred thousand. Again, our foundation aid, and like all districts across the state, has not been returned to districts, so we're not seeing the level of aid and funding that districts are, are looking to see. So we're seeing a very low number there, fifty-seven thousand dollars. I'm projecting some interest, increase in our interest earnings of sixty thousand. We're not, we're going to see a decrease in our tuitions or added district students. So we're losing revenue there, about two hundred and fifty thousand. And, and the slide doesn't want to continue. I apologize. I think the, I think it just froze, so hold on a minute.
Jill, while it's frozen, the state aid at fifty-seven thousand, that's, that's an, that's the increase. That's, that's not the, the total state aid we're getting, right?
No, that's not the total state aid we get. That is just the amount in addition to what we're getting over the last year.
And is that based on where the state budget is at now? Is this the governor's proposal this is based on?
That's the proposed revenues that's, that were given to us in January, and on April first, all districts are in hopes of having a, a state budget, so that we do know what state aid we're getting. It seems to be freezing for some reason.
It's working on the little computer.
It's going page by page?
Yeah. And I'm, I'm at the page where you got frozen on before.
Yeah.
And it's letting me go to the next page.
You could get a different, want me to get a different computer? I apologize.
Want to just grab this one, Jill?
Yeah.
Ah, the old force command.
Hmm. I'm getting a new computer. That's Jill's.
What is the logo she's using? That little circle.
Maybe two other conferences.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Why don't you not do it as a presentation, just do it as a song?
I'm going to do it like that. It doesn't have the same effect, but.
We're fine.
Sorry.
That's fine. I don't need to be impressed by that.
And we have it impressively here.
Okay. So again, we're not getting any added district tuitions. That's going to bring our, our revenues down two hundred and fifty thousand. Our taxes remain under the allowable cap at nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. And we will need to have the use of our reserves to stay under the tax cap. And some are, some are reduced. It all, it depends on our liability at the time. So our tax sorcery, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, employee and benefit liability reserve, one hundred thousand, employee retirement system reserve, two hundred thousand. And we, our appropriated fund balance will be taking less from about fourteen thousand. A grand total budget to budget change in revenue, the two point seven million. This is a look at our revenues overall, and we have our state and federal sources, again, increase of fifty-seven thousand, under, under one percent, or point five, six percent. Again, April first, the state budget is expected to be enacted, and perhaps we'll see more revenue then. Really not sure. Our local non-tax revenue sources are five hundred and ten thousand, down one hundred and eighty-five thousand. That's where the, the tuition, the tuitions came in and decreased our revenues there. Our real property tax revenue, the real property tax revenue, again, nine hundred and seventy-one, four ninety, or two point seven, two percent, meeting our, under our tax cap. Our appropriated fund balance, down fourteen thousand, as mentioned, at seven eighteen, four thirty-three. And our appropriated reserves, again, one point five. Those are needed to balance our budget and, and bring us to where we need to be to meet our, our budget to budget increases. So the subtotal of our revenues, which is really our budget to budget increase of two point eight percent at one point four million. And then we have that one-time reclassification or debt transfer of one point three million to bring us to a total of fifty-one, two ninety-four, nine, nineteen. Again, this is the one-time reclassification. This is really our budget to budget increase here of two point eight percent. So the expenditure impacts that we have, you'll see the inter-fund transfer, again, one point three million. That is purely a non-tax item. It is just a transfer between two funds. Our teacher retirement system rates increasing this year, point eight, three percent, which is two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Again, we cannot make that part of our tax cap because it's under two percent. They don't allow anything to be added that's under two percent. Increase in health premiums, three point seven, five percent, or three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Again, this is a negotiated item in our bargaining unit contracts, so there is a contribution from employees to help offset that cost. Other salaries, contracted services and materials and supplies, about five hundred and twenty-five thousand. This includes our BOSI services increasing at about three percent. And we have two full-time employment retire, uh, full-time equivalent retirements. We have one teacher and one non-teaching position that are both not being replaced. We have a programmatic change for next year, additional buses through our contractor, four large buses and one van. And this is adding about two hundred and five thousand to the budget. And we have a savings with our replacement of using Chromebooks instead of laptops in one of our grade levels, and that's saving us about a hundred thousand dollars. So our total budget to budget changes, two point seven million, but again, includes the debt reclassification that inflates that number. So our, our overall expenditures by category are here. We have our general support category, which is four point four million. We have our instruction category, which again, it's the highest dollar increase, but yet our lowest percent increase, because that is two-thirds of our budget, our instruction budget. Transportation, up seven point five percent, or a hundred and ninety-seven. That's the extra buses. The undistributed is also where the line, eleven point nine million, where we have our mandated, you know, taxes, retirement contribution. So employee benefits, as far as what the district has to pay for health insurance premiums and FICA and Medicare. So our, all of those mandated things. Our inter-fund transfers, one point two million, down fifty-six thousand. Mainly, that's down, we had two vans purchased last year, or two SUVs. So that's why you see the decrease there. So we don't have that this year. And, and our subtotal of our budget to budget increase is two point eight percent, or one point four million. Our one-time reclass of one point three million brings us to fifty-one, two ninety-four, nine, nineteen, or two point seven overall. This is our three-part budget, represents our different parts of the budget. Our administrative portion, which is at twelve point two percent. Our capital portion, which is at eleven point five percent. And the largest part of the budget, our instructional program, at seventy-six point three percent of the budget. With the bus proposition is going to be proposition number two on the ballot. This has nothing and to do with the later start, or it's not related to that in any way. So the cost for later start is, is not related to this. This is a proposition asking voters to approve financing up to five hundred thousand dollars on district-owned buses. So the district has vehicles, and the contractor that transports our children has vehicles. We need to upkeep the vehicles that belong to us. And in order to do that, we, every once in a while, have to repair, I mean, replace a bus. Replacing a large bus costs about ninety thousand dollars, and replacing a van can cost about sixty-five thousand. So no money is borrowed until a replacement vehicle is needed. The proposition only allows for the borrowing if necessary. The actual dollars that are spent, or when a bus replacement becomes necessary for aging vehicles, through a New York State bidding procurement process. We have to go through the same process to purchase a bus as we do anything else. And it's financed over a five-year payback period. This means that it has less impact on program. It, it's a payment that gets spread over the five years, over five budget years of principal and interest. And it's important for maintaining the vehicles and maintaining safety with the vehicles. So tonight, which I didn't talk about last time, I'm going to talk about our contingency budget and what it is. So every, every time you put a budget to vote, there's always that possibility of, of budget not passing. But you know, the option, there are three options. If a budget is defeated twice, the board would be forced to adopt a contingent budget. So option one, when a budget is defeated, is to re-vote on the same budget. Option two is to re-vote on a cut budget. And option three would be to adopt a contingency budget. On a contingency budget, the tax levy can be no greater than the prior year, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in cuts. In our case, administrative portion of the budget could not exceed the prior year's budget, and only not, and non-contingent items would have to be removed. So cuts could be in many areas, or a combination such as personnel, athletics, instructional programs, and operations which impact all students. A lower levy would, would not allow for program growth or programmatic changes that are necessary for student success. So again, at least nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, four ninety would have to be cut. And cuts comprise, compromise current and future program budgets. This is our budget calendar. April twelfth, we have our special business meeting to adopt the budget. April sixteenth, we have our trustee petitions that are due to the district clerk. We have two positions open this year. May first is our final public hearing on the budget. May tenth is the last day for community members to register to vote, and May fifteenth is the vote. Well, it'll be a proposition number one, which is the school budget vote, proposition number two, which is the bus proposition, or bus financing, and two trustee seats. It'll be held at the elementary school from six AM to nine PM. And we encourage everyone to come out and vote, and if, to please sign up for our electronic newsletter at www.pvcd.org. You'll see some more information coming out in the form of a spring newsletter. I believe April second is the, the deadline for us.
Do you think that, do you think that maybe with kids in school who are already receiving this, we're trying to reach the border?
Right. So, so what we find is, obviously, we send out many connect ads to, you know, the families of the students that attend this district. And really, we're trying to reach out and make sure we get a broader audience by having this available to people on the website and having them sign up for the newsletter on our website, so that we can, you know, be, you know, inform everyone of what's going on, not just the, the parents of students that attend school. So does anyone have any questions?
Jill, the, when you did these calculations, were they based on the exact same staff in all areas that are currently in the district? In other words, same custodian room, same teaching staff?
The, the teaching staff that's existing in the district would remain, you know, other than the two positions that I mentioned, there would be no additions to the staff for next year.
Which two positions were those again, please?
There's one teaching position and one non-teaching position.
Added or subtracted?
Retirees.
Retirees.
That aren't going to be?
So they will not be replaced. There are also some leave replacements and, and other points that I know we added this year that I, that will not be, not be needed for next year. And again, until all of the, like, you know, particulars are done on IEPs for students in the spring and, and all of that, we won't know the exact needs, but that's the, that's what we have included in the budget right now.
So, so what was, what was it calculated on? Just the reduction in the one teacher and the one CFCA was it?
It's one teaching assistant, uh, teacher aide, excuse me, and one, one teacher, full-time teacher. And any additional leave replacements that are currently in the, being paid, or, you know, that's not, that's not a plan as far as replacing them for next year. you know, that's not, that's not a plan as far as replacing them for next year, the teachers that they're replacing are coming back, and they're not, we won't have the need for those extra points or extra parts of a teacher that are now being put in their place.
Right, but that position's not going to disappear, the returning teacher would, or aide would move into that position?
Right, for now. Until we know more about our enrollment, and until we know more about our schedule, finalizing those schedules, which, you know, should happen before we adopt the budget, so we will know if there's any other opportunities to do that.
Jill, I noticed the use of our appropriated reserves, which we've been doing as long as I've been on the board, to help balance the budget and reduce the tax levy. In sixteen seventeen, it was about eight hundred and five thousand, in seventeen eighteen, it was nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, and it's up five hundred and seventy-eight thousand this year to one million five hundred and three. I know there's no one simple answer about why.
Right.
But what would you?
There's different reasons for, for different uses of our reserves. Basically, though, we've had to dig into our reserves to help us meet the budget-to-budget increases, because the state aid isn't coming through. And, you know, we can only do that to a certain point when, you know, where it becomes irresponsible to do it any further, because we need to have, we need to have those reserves, it's important, it's an important part of our budgeting process.
Okay, so if, you said before that we were in the ballpark of close to three hundred thousand less state aid, that would certainly account for that, because that cost.
Jill, the one point three million dollars that shows up on both revenue and expense, when it shows the entire budget at that fifty-one million, moving into two thousand nineteen, twenty, that number would go down by that amount, less any other changes that would happen for those, for any other debt transfers in that year.
Right, you'll see, you'll always see debt transfer coming in as long as we continue to pay the debt, so, but that will not be part of the tax levy.
Right, just, when if some, because when somebody looks at the vote and they see a number of fifty-one, that, again, that's a result of our, of an inflated debt of transfer. In the following year, it could go back down.
Right.
That number will go back down unless there are other transfers.
Correct.
That exceeded that.
Correct.
Any other questions? And the, just the whole budget, as you outlined, is on the website?
This will be.
The presentation will be on the website.
On the website as a presentation for everyone to view, under our, our budget heading for this year, yes.
Do we have, sorry.
I was just wondering, the, the one slide you showed us where the information about STAR and tax relief.
Mm-hmm.
Is that number anywhere easy on our website for parents? I know it's probably, it's embedded in this, so they can get it.
Well, this number is only based on the current year's tax levy and that happened in the fall, so these aren't numbers that.
No, the phone number to call.
Oh, the phone numbers to call.
The phone number. Maybe on, on the website that Alex showed us that had tax information, maybe that website should be there as a resource.
I can check to see that the number's there for sure. It may already exist, but I can double check that.
Yeah, just, you know, under parent resources or something, because, I mean, I, we all know the presentation, but to not have to search for it.
Right.
As the, for the schedule, the, we have another, do we have another presentation of this before adoption, or is this the last one before adoption?
I'm not scheduled to present it again before, other than changes that may exist in the budget in its entirety. I certainly can do that if we think it's.
I'm just meaning, as far as our meeting, our meeting schedule is concerned, do we have another meeting before the adoption date?
Well, the hearing, at the hearing, I believe.
Well, the hearing is after the adoption.
Yeah, it's after the adoption.
Adoption is the next meeting, the twelfth.
So we adopted the next meeting?
That's three weeks.
So I'm, I'm losing a little track of the dates here, because of all the snow dates and everything. So April twelfth is the meeting to adopt the budget, so that is the next meeting, I believe.
We're not meeting, no, we're not meeting, that would have been, that would have been spring break, that's why we would have met, right.
Now, as far as getting out the budget information to, you know, the community, Dr. Wills and I will visit, I know, our senior center, we will visit as many places, you know, in town that we feel that we can get into to discuss the budget. We plan a meeting with staff and support staff to also present the budget. I know we've had a short budget season because of the bad weather, so it's important for everyone to understand what's in the budget.
And we talked a little bit about it tonight with the listening hour group. We talked about the budget.
Will we be presenting it at, or parts, a portion of it at the town board? Is that scheduled?
We haven't yet, but that's after it's adopted.
That's usually after adoption.
We do.
Yeah, when the numbers.
In a summary version.
When the numbers become more final, and they can certainly change right up until the end, depending upon the state budget.
So any questions, any further questions we have, any changes on the board, we'd like to see, we have to get to you before our next meeting.
We do have it, now that you can wait till the twenty-fourth, we don't like to do that, because then this newsletter reveals to us.
Yeah, the newsletter is going to go out on April second with a lot of, with this information. Then there'll be another, the elec, that'll be an electronic newsletter.
Okay.
There is going to be a paper copy of the budget, the final budget, that's being proposed on the ballot, and the budget notice that's required by state, that will go out in the mail.
Okay.
There'll be a longer version of the budget newsletter on April thirteenth, okay, I think she says right, April thirteenth, that will include all of the extended budget information. But that's again, after the April twelfth adoption of the budget. So we're hoping the state budget comes through on April first, I mean, that's a lot of what, why you're asking, the questions that you're asking, because we haven't been able to, we don't know that final number, that state aid number.
Right, and likely, since April first is a Sunday, and it's Easter, probably won't have anything until the week after, at least.
We'll look.
Right.
I mean, we're not in the days where we were getting budgets in June and July. They have been more or less around April first, most several years I've been on the board.
They have been.
So we should know.
And we are trying to think of ways to get, you know, budget information out to the public as, you know, as, as many ways we can. I don't, you know, we're, we hope that, that people are listening to what we're saying.
And then we'll also be doing an IPB when we get to that point? Sorry, Inside Putnam Valley video?
Yes.
Will we be having a budget video?
We usually do that.
We usually do that just prior to.
And are we now getting those videos to, to the, to television?
Yes.
Okay.
I do, talking about that, Eric Gross has been ill, and I want to wish him, get well.
Okay. Absolutely.
Any other questions from the board at this time?
Okay, and just a reminder for everybody to, again, the most information can be found in our website on the budget, and to sign up for the electronic newsletter is to keep abreast of the information as well.
And I guess the, you said it at the listening hour, Dr. Wills, but the one point people might have is, it might appear that we're going above, if people are operating, like the tax cap is a two percent tax cap, it sounds like we're spending above that. It is not, as Jill, your calculations were really good, first time I understood it well in several years, but you're, it really is a tax spending limit, and the second year we went, the tax spending limit was above two percent, and it is a new, it is now. So we are not looking for a supermajority, we are not going above our allowable spending. I think that's important to say, because two percent is a confusing number out there.
Right. Two percent is just really one line of the calculation.
Right.
Of the formula for the tax cap, and, you know, to, for the state to, to make people feel like that is the cap on everything, is just, it's not the clear picture of what things are.
Some people are at three percent and higher.
Yeah, there are just many districts who are way above that, and it's all dependent upon your debt as well. It doesn't, it's not just reliant on that two percent, that is only one line in the calculation, and we're staying below the cap, and I think we're doing the best we can. We, we really have answered to, you know, what I think the state is trying to get most districts to do, and that's to utilize any, like, any excess, what they feel is excess reserves, which I don't, you know, view in the same way, but the, they view them as excess reserves, and, and we've tried to answer that and, and take care of that over the past few years, and, and we certainly have, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to move on to reports, and we'll start with our students.
Our science research class competed at the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair this past weekend. The competition includes over six hundred students from Westchester and Putnam Counties. Eleven students from our program competed, nine of which were recognized for their awards for their research project. This is a very tough competition, so achieving any form of award is a huge honor. Among those who were awarded were Caitlin Cohen, who was given the Metric System Award, Dora Rippon, given the Think Steam Award, Olivia Schmidt, given fourth place in the category of microbiology, our very own Erin Pedersen, given third place in the category of behavior, a very highly competitive category.
Also placing in third was Paige Lee for the category of neuroscience, Connor Van Riper placing in third in the category of behavior, Haley Lewis given second place in the category of environmental studies, and the Stockholm Junior Water Award for the second year in a row, Jasper Katzban given the Intel Excellence in Computer Science Award, and first place in the category of computer science. And finally, my co-student rep, student Broas, Sarah Broas.
Who is a student.
Sarah received the Scientista Award and placed first in her category for engineering. She got the highest score out of all six hundred competitors, and now holds the record for the highest score received at WestEF in the past ten years. Because she was one of the top twelve competitors, she was selected to compete at the Intel ISF Competition, which is the International Science and Engineering Fair. It's the world's largest international pre-college science competition, which is held in Pittsburgh this year. So congratulations to all of our science research winners, and good luck to Sarah Broas at Intel ISF.
We needed bigger flowers.
This year's cheerleading team was incredibly successful. They went to states just two weekends ago. While there, they placed first in a preliminary round before competing for the state title, placing fourth in all of New York State. Congratulations to such a successful team on all of their hard work this season. We're looking forward to seeing them next year.
The school musical is approaching very fast, and rehearsals have been being held for the past two months, and with all the snow days, the cast and crew have been spending every moment they can to make this year's musical amazing. Opening night of Dirty Rotten Scoundrels will be April twentieth, and tickets will be on sale very soon, so make sure you purchase tickets before it gets sold out.
They're on sale now.
They're on sale now, by the way. The musical is a fun-filled comedy that will have you laughing throughout the entire play.
Our mock trial team new this year has been incredibly successful. The team prepares arguments and then heads to local courthouses to compete with other high schools. From what I have heard, our team is strong and has won every court case thus far. They're moving on to the regional round of competition after their recent victories. Congratulations to our team, and good luck on your next case.
National Honor Society held their annual spring blood drive today, and had an overwhelming amount of donors, which will certainly help save the lives of many individuals. So thank you to the National Honor Society for hosting this event, and to all those who took time out of their day to donate.
This past weekend, students from the Putnam, Putnam Valley High School attended the Human Rights Institute for High School Students last week. Students participated in breakout sessions where they heard a Holocaust survivor and a parent who lost their child in the Sandy Hook tragedy. Thank you to the students that attended the event and represented Putnam Valley.
The senior class of two thousand eighteen held the second Mr. Valley competition last week. There were many contestants who showed their amazing talents and shared their uplifting enthusiasm. This event was to help raise money for the Education Foundation and the senior class. After many stressful elimination rounds, the two thousand twelve Mr. Valley winner was announced. So congratulations, congratulations to Justin Gonzalez for his new title as Mr. Valley.
This past Saturday, at the New York State Girl Scouts Ceremony, one hundred and six young ladies in eight counties were awarded their gold awards. Haley Lewis, class of two thousand eighteen, was awarded her Girl Scouts Gold Award for her creation of the Putnam Valley High School Environmental Club and Garden. This is the highest possible Girl Scouts award, so such an achievement is notable. We are proud that her project took place at our very own high school, and we're excited to see this year's harvest, harvest from the garden.
PVHS Wrestling Team awarded Best Sportsmanship for Section One, Division Two. This is a brand-new award given out at the All-Section Recognition Brunch held this past Sunday at the Doral Arrowood in Rye. Section One officials recognize the teams that consistently demonstrate the best sportsmanship in their program at all levels, and Putnam Valley was selected as the team for Division Two, Section One. This is a great honor for our athletes.
Additionally, Kyle Samms finished fourth in the New York State Wrestling Competition. This is his second time as an all-state finisher. He also has the most wins in a single season for a Putnam Valley wrestler. For gymnastics, Caitlin Pellegrino also competed at the state level and placed twenty-fourth at all, out of all of New York State.
The Triumph Music Honor Society had its induction ceremony a few weeks ago. The Triumph Honor Society includes students that have continuously demonstrated excellence in the area of music, including chorus, band, and theory. The ceremony was intimate and included performances by the society's president, Paige Lee, and vice president, Chloe Berger. Mr. Papalino was also inducted as an honorary member. Congratulations to the newest members of the Triumph Honor Society.
Congratulations to the class of two thousand eighteen salutatorian, Joe Obate, and the valedictorian, Paige Lee. These two students have an amazing work ethic that has allowed them to achieve such a high honor. Join me in wishing them a huge congratulations for their academic hard work and dedication during their high school career.
The elementary school held their Science Maker Fair last week, which displayed the hard work of many fourth graders. These students have been working with their senior, with senior members from the Science National Honor Society to be able to perform outstanding science experiments. These experiments ranged from creating magnetic slime to hovercrafts, to even making steam engines. These students have amazing potential, and we'd like to congratulate them on their hard work.
Finally, congratulations to our newest members of the Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society. A new group of sophomore students were inducted on the basis of their performance in the area of mathematics. Congratulations to all that were honored in the wonderful ceremony.
Wow. That's a lot. And I love, Dr. Wills was talking about, she's going to cover some of the same things, but I love the well-roundedness. The guy happened to be at Mr. Valley and saw Connor Rippon perform, and not ten hours later, he's at the STEAM Science Awards, took the tuxedo off, put his lab coat on, and became a different person, so it is amazing how well-rounded you all are. Okay. Dr. Luft, you are next. They're a tough act to follow, Dr. Luft.
I know, it's hard enough to plan this with Dr. Wills. Now, the two ladies are stealing all my glory. I crossed off half the things I was going to talk about.
It's their glory.
It's their glory. So, we had members of our elementary and middle school staff visit Mayapack to see what they're calling their breakthrough classrooms, and it was a very interesting experience, both hearing from them in person and visiting classrooms to see it at work. Some of their breakthrough classrooms, or their breakthrough classrooms cover really three main categories. One is the use of flexible seating, one is the integration of technology, and the last is pedagogical shifts around the idea of providing students choice in how to complete an activity. It's something that we've, three items that we've been talking a lot about in Putnam Valley, and that visit and our debriefs led, became the inspiration for what we're going to call our PV Innovative Classroom Academy, and it'll be our own chance to identify teachers to participate in a cohort of training model. The teachers will represent all three buildings and departments, well, the teachers will come from all three buildings and represent multiple departments, and they'll be provided support and training and implementation, and what they'll provide back to the district is modeling for their peers and turnkey training. So there's an application that's being built now, and more information will be forthcoming. But in speaking with the teachers who participated in the visitation. But in speaking with the teachers who participated in the visitation, they're very excited for this opportunity. And I think it's just another step for us to bring our classroom instructions to the next level, to make sure that we're engaging all students in meaningful and relevant curricula. There's a new and exciting program coming to the music department. It's called Music First. There's actually a variety of tools within the program, but our music staff was trained. They've issued us a pilot to begin this year, which will carry through next year. And there's all sorts of tools to help the teachers implement their curricula as well as teach and score and allow students to practice their music. The district's in the process of consulting, of contracting with Altoris K-12 Security. This is in response to, uh, the recent tragedy in Florida. And although as a district, we're constantly reviewing our process and protocols, we thought this was a good opportunity to shift with, uh, to shift to a consulting company that does a lot of work in the area. They're actually, the CEO is a retired, uh, local police officer. And we think it's a great opportunity to get a new set of eyes in. The work will begin with a needs assessment, where they'll review all three of our buildings, and then the work will continue through the years with training in each building. Recently, we met with members of the Putnam County Mental Health Coalition. We discussed possibility of offering county-based services here in Putnam Valley, the possibility for partnerships with their programs. And they helped us raise, they helped raise some awareness of what they have to offer in terms of mental health. Dr. Kenneth Mitchell is returning to work with our assistant principals and they're working on developing themes for their future work. Our middle school has implemented their math challenge blocks. I know it's something that we've talked about for a couple of weeks here. The math challenge blocks happen during their eye block and their base, their ability-based groupings spread out across all teachers. The math challenge, that, they offer math challenge opportunities for all students and the initial feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. This is a pilot of this structure and we hope that it'll continue into ELA in the near future.
That was the elementary school, I just, you-
Oh, sorry, when I say middle school? Sorry, elementary school.
And, and Dr. Luft has been working very closely with the principal, Ms. Podesta, and, uh, you know, and, and teachers on, on this particular project. And I think it's really leading the way to, um, thinking of differentiation during those eye blocks. Again, looking toward ELA next.
So also at the elementary school, the students celebrated their Colonial Day, where the students assumed a profession from colonial times. They dressed in part and presented facts on their work and shared artifacts. There was a shadow play, who is Ruby Bridges, which is very exciting to see the students interact and really hear a history lesson. The science fair, we had briefly discussed. I was very impressed by both the quantity and quality of the work, as well as the students' ability to articulate their work. I certainly think there are some aspiring science research students within the group. That, I was so impressed during the day that I actually brought my own two boys back in the evening and there was a very large crowd there to hear the students, uh, display their work or present their work. And the elementary school musical was also this past weekend. At the middle school, we hosted a curriculum night. Travis, Nicole, and myself shared many of our instructional and curricular shifts. It was a great turnout from our staff and I'll say an above-average turnout from our parents. We created an FAQ document to address unanswered questions and feedback from the evening was very positive from both parents and staff. Also at the middle school, we hosted a next-generation science implementation meeting where we discussed curriculum and instructional practices, grade-level implementation and standards. At the high school, we briefly discussed the science research and what a huge accomplishment for many of our students at the Westef, especially our two student representatives. IB implementation continues and I'm very excited that tomorrow I'll be attending the first robotics competition. It's the first year where our PV shockbots will be competing in the first robotics competition. It's held Friday and Saturday at, uh, Rockland Community College.
That's a high school, high school. No, 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 I just wondered. Very exciting. That leaves me with very little, uh, to add, except I will-
You should just say what they said.
What they said, no. But I, I wanna point out, um, a couple of things. First, we cannot underestimate the success of our science research program in any way. This is remarkable. We have an incredible teacher, Mr. Zupan, who has created with the students a community of researchers who support each other, who, um, provide a space for thinking, for support, for, uh, really working through problems together. And it's a very young program. It's the fourth year of a program. In many schools, they've had this program for twenty years, fifteen years, ten years. And they do not necessarily reach this level of success. So let's, let's really think about how successful that program has been with the students we have who have really engaged in this kind of thinking. And we're very, very proud of what they've accomplished.
Dr. Wills, do you think we could hear more from, uh, the science research students? Sometimes that they could maybe talk about their process. I mean, I'm very interested in what Sarah has, uh, done and the, and the progress, the personal progress that they've felt along the way over the-
Exactly.
The time and effort that they've put in. It just would be very interesting, I think, maybe even for students and, uh, the parents of those students coming up to hear more about what the process has been like.
I think, you know, I think that's a, that's a really terrific idea because what they're learning is, is the science, but also how to plan, how to set goals, how to prepare, how to speak articulately about what they're doing. Yes, I think it would be wonderful if a few students at least could come up and talk about that process. And isn't there a night that you do that in the fall? I'm trying to remember, um, like when they first get started off. I don't know if they do it every year.
Yes, um, there's actually a science research symposium coming up in May. I don't know the date yet. Um, but stay tuned. I can announce it at one of the future meetings. But yes, there is a symposium that, um, presents a lot of the students' research and allows, um, new member, new, um, sophomores coming up into the program to look at the program and ask questions. So attendance in that event would be suggested.
And, um, I, I'd also, you know, again, like to comment on the, um, elementary musical just a little bit more because, uh, they had so few rehearsals because of the time that we had, um, you know, the, the, the snow days and so on. And yet those students were so in love with what they were doing on, uh, on stage. So that was, that Night of Dawn was a wonderful program. We had also the Mandarin Chinese, um, presentation last evening for the incoming, um, seventh graders in the program. And we had some of the eighth graders there talking about their experience, the, in the program, the, that is, the new eighth graders, talking about their experience this year. So again, that was, um, a, a great family, uh, event as well. And, um, I just want to say that the Ruby Bridges present, presentation that, uh, Mr. Luft referred to was, um, really a very special, um, attempt to help our students understand an experience that was a, a great struggle and, uh, something that most children never, ever would even imagine. Um, the kind of isolation, the kind of hostility faced by Ruby Bridges, this little girl going into first grade in Louisiana, uh, where her school was segregated and then by law, of course, we had the nineteen fifty-seven, um, desegregation ruling by the Supreme Court. And this little child on her was this amazing, amazing burden, if you will, responsibility and the greatness of that moment of walking into that school and staying there for the year. And all the details were there through the eyes of Ruby Bridges and our students were able to experience that, uh, through Mr. Spurling's, uh, student performance. So it was really quite, quite remarkable. I also, um, wanted to state that, um, our listening hour, I felt was, um, you know, a very nice interaction tonight. People are concerned about security and, you know, as, as Dr. Luft mentioned, we're looking at a new, um, a contract with a, a company through BOSI's that will do an assessment of our security. And naturally, people are concerned that we are doing everything we can to ensure that the environment is safe, uh, for all of our students. Um, we're all sad about our makeup days, uh, spring break. But this was a very unusual year and everyone has pulled together. And I want to thank the staff. I want to thank everyone for their cooperation in pulling together, um, during that, you know, difficult situation where that's expected and, uh, the makeup days are necessary. And I hope all of our students will come because there will be regular, very rigorous program as, as always in the school. So, um, I think that's all. And Dr. Luft, the makeup days have to be student instructional days, correct? Yes. Um, well, we, in our case, in our contract, we have a hundred and eighty-six days, a hundred and eighty-three student days and three superintendent's conference days. The state requires overall a hundred and eighty days. Of that hundred and eighty days, four may be conference days and a hundred and seventy-six could be student days. So, uh, we're, at this point, given the makeup, we are at a hundred and seventy-seven student days and three superintendent's conference days. And if something else were to occur, we would have to have a superintendent's conference day after the last day of school. We, we're not there yet and I hope we never have to get there because it's been, for everyone, um, quite a, a difficult, a difficult one. Because I know, um, I've, I've been reading, obviously, there's a lot of conversation about this. So many schools lost power. Some, you know, it sounds like we took eleven snow days, but five of them were no-power days. Um, and I know some schools are tacking on staff-only days in June to protect at least that day after Easter. But it sounds like we, our makeup day has to be a student day. It can't be a staff-only day. Okay.
Right. The, the, actually ironically, the state just sent additional guidance on the, the use of staff element days after the reading day. And it's districts only when that additional day brings them up to one eighty and only a single day may be used. So nobody can go beyond that Monday, which I think is June twenty-fifth. You could only use June twenty-fifth as a conference day if you haven't already used your four superintendent's conference days. So some districts are in that position, many are not. But I think that we have, we've avoided that to date. We still had days we can give back before necessitating that day to be one of our one eighty. So we're not there yet and spring is here, so there will be no more snow.
We're to hope. And I believe there's PTA, PTSA report? We're a very friendly audience. Yep. And just introduce yourself.
Stacy.
Yeah, you're Dr. Will's microphone.
My name is Stacy Bradley. I am part of the PTA, the co-president of the PTA. So, um, first I just want to start off by saying that the, the, the middle school will be having the Student of the Month Breakfast tomorrow morning. So we want to congratulate all the recipients. Tomorrow evening at the elementary school is our grandparents and special person, Dr. Stu's Reading Spectacular Event. We invite all elementary school families to join us in our celebration of reading. It's a free event. There'll be craft, light refreshments, and lots of reading. The event will begin at six PM and it will be held at the Elementary School Auditorium, or as I like to call it, the old gym, but that's, so, um, on March twenty-sixth, the Arston Ed Department will present a theater work production of Freedom Train at the elementary school. We are hosting a general PTA meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-seven, featuring Danny Turner, the middle school health teacher. Uh, Mr. Turner will present to families topics impacting our community and student, including smoking, vaping, drugs, social media. And there will also be a Q and A session. The meeting starts at six PM and will be held at the middle school cafeteria. The elementary school yearbooks are now on sale. Flyers were sent home with students and will be posted to our website and Facebook page. To order a yearbook for the elementary school, yearbook order, go to yearbookordercenter.com and our order number is one eight zero zero four. We just extended the, for the purchase, it's now April twenty-third, to buy a yearbook. We also have booster ads that are also available for purchase and those have to be placed by March thirtieth. Um, and to find out more about our upcoming event or to volunteer for any of our events is putnamvalleypta.org or you could email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org.
Thank you very much. Excellent.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up now to public contribution on any of the agenda items for this evening. Okay. Now I've had a request. What do you think, Dave?
I'm fine.
Okay. So we were going to suggest starting the resolutions to the right as opposed to the left. And we have a volunteer for number three. So we'll start number one then with Mr. Ferraro as usual.
Resolved on recommendation, the superintendent of schools to appoint Caitlin Hayes to a twenty-six-week probationary appointment effective April ninth, two thousand eighteen, through October ninth, teens, two thousand eighteen, extendable to April ninth, two thousand nineteen, as a registered nurse district-wide on step four of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two. Are we gonna be flexible? Dave, take number two. Give your glasses on to me?
No, but I think the bigger font on the printed thing, I'm good.
All right. Uh, resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a supplemental memorandum of agreement between the district and the PVFT for retirement incentive effective solely for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and the two thousand nineteen, twenty school years as per document number one thirty-two slash, slash eighteen attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Whereas the two thousand eighteen, nineteen executive budget proposes a reduction in state reimbursement for mandated summer special education programs from the current eighty percent reimbursement to a wealth-adjusted reimbursement rate. And whereas under this proposal, two-thirds of the districts in Westchester and Putnam Counties would only be eligible to receive the minimum proposed state reimbursement of twenty-five percent for summer special education. Yet the Putnam Valley Central School Districts, herein called the district, I'm sorry, hereafter called the district, proposed state reimbursement is currently eighty percent. And whereas the exec, executive budget further proposes a two percent expenditure reimbursement cap on the annual increases in transportation, BOSI's, and building aid effective two thousand nineteen, twenty. And whereas the governor asserts that the state funds from the two percent expenditure reimbursement cap on annual increases in transportation, BOSI's, and building aid would go to foundation aid for high-need districts. The executive budget does not contain any language in that regard. And whereas the two percent cap on transportation reimbursement aid disregards normal variability due to school bus purchases, fuel and labor cost increases, changes in the number of students requiring N, uh, NYS mandated special education transportation in a fifty-mile radius, fluctuations in the number of private and parochial school students transported within a fifteen-mile radius, changes in the number of homeless or foster children requiring transportation under federal law, successful interscholastic teams whose expanded seasons increases bus costs. And whereas the proposed two percent tax cap on annual increases in BOSI's reimbursement aid would be a disincentive to use BOSI's shared services to professional development and student programs such as career, technical education, special education, or alternative high school, et cetera, and would have been a hundred and eighty thousand dollar reduction in state aid to the district had it been in effect this year. And whereas the proposed two percent building aid cap is based on the overall state increase in building aid and not determined on an individual district basis. And any cut would proportionally affect all school districts receiving building aid, creating uncertainty regarding a district's ability to plan for proposed projects and fund those already in progress. Any cut in building aid could result in higher property taxes or a reduction in other programs or staffing. And whereas eighty percent of the districts in Westchester and Putnam Counties would only receive the two thousand eighteen, nineteen proposed point two-five percent minimum increase in foundation aid, including this district, irrespective of increases in New York State employer pension costs, rising healthcare premiums in New York State, and contractual salary increases that affect every school district in the state. And whereas the executive budget proposes to maintain veto, veto power over school district budgets for big five-city school districts and certain other large districts based on their school-level funding plan- based on their school-level funding plan, which disregards local control of school districts across New York State. And whereas New York State property taxes and taxes in our region in particular are the highest nationally, and any further revenue shift from the state to local taxpayer could result in increased property taxes. And whereas these reductions in state aid could lead the program or, lead to program or staff cuts in order to stay under the maximum allowable tax levy limit, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of this district calls upon the New York State Assembly and New York State Senate to rebuke executive budget proposals that shift costs to the local taxpayer, and resolve that the Board of Education of the district opposes any caps on state reimbursement for expense-based aids, and resolve that the Board of Education of the district deems that these line items, limitations compromise a local school district's decision-making and flexibility, and further be it resolved that the Board of Education of the district calls upon the Governor, New York State Assembly, and New York State Senate to appropriately fund public school districts and stop diverting much-needed state funds so we can address the ever-increasing needs of the children we serve.
Second. Preach.
Questions or comments, Dr. Wills?
I just, again, want to, this is probably one of the best summaries of some of the issues that are facing New York State right now. And when you have a draconian kind of mandate, two percent, takes, does not take into account particular areas in any one year that a state is, that a district is dealing with, you have a huge problem in the making. You have the kinds of situations that are now facing some other states where they literally cannot fund public education, where they actually have to shorten the year. Because, for example, let's take the summer program, E S Y, which we provide here and we have a wonderful program for our students in this special education, who receive this kind of special education. We now receive eighty percent funding to help us house that program here. With this change, and I think Natalie, you'll agree, and we've discussed this, that, that two percent limit on the increase will make it impossible for us to even house an E S Y program here. So, we would have to do something completely different and send our students somewhere else. We could not afford this kind of a program. Maybe you want to mention just?
You know, again, we, we run programs for six weeks here and we have our staff and have our students here. With the, the cuts currently, it would just really be almost all on the taxpayers, correct, Jill?
Yep. The school district alone, our school district, in the resolution, those numbers are ours. I mean, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar impact for our budget is, you're talking about going out for supermajority budgets if these things come to fruition. Because you can't take away the aid that we're getting on, you know, the expense-based aids if we're going to continue offering the same programs and training the same way that we're, we're working with our staff and students.
And it's, they're federal mandates. I mean, we are required, under the New York State regulations and actually under the federal regulations, to provide these services. So, these aren't services that we just want to. These are services that are mandated. So, that's the difference between.
And the problem here is it takes away local control, to make, the local school district to make choices about where their increases need to be, what their needs are in any particular one year. So, to say that it's, for example, two percent increase in BOCs only, that will basically erode the opportunity to use BOCs services and it will take away our attempt to use shared services and receive that aid, which is now in our revenue. We, we lie upon this revenue to help us move forward, to actually be able to meet the two, the, the tax cap that we have. So, to have a tax cap and then also have this two percent reimbursement limit is, is very draconian and would indeed take away our opportunity to say, okay, these are our needs this year in transportation, next year it might be some other area, we would only have that opportunity for a two percent rebate. This is a very serious problem. And what's happened over the last several years is that the foundation aid itself has, is, is no, we're no longer following the formula that the state itself created for foundation aid. And so, we don't receive the aid that we're supposed to receive. We're receiving fifty-seven thousand this year. Last year, it was, it was two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand. And it's completely unpredictable what you will, what you receive for aid. So, you, you don't have that revenue to use in your development, in the development of your budget. This is, this is a very serious matter and hopefully it will be corrected because I believe that both houses in the state are aware that this would be very detrimental to, to public schools.
Because I think it's tricky, you know, when you, the Every Child, Every Child Succeeds Act, and some of the federal mandates, we would all agree, are great for kids. Like, I'm very familiar with, they, one of the things you read, Dave, is the Homeless Act. It used to be that if a student achieved permanent housing in a school year, they were allowed to stay the remainder of the school year, but they had to provide their own transportation. That's now changed and the districts have to provide the transportation now.
Up to fifty miles.
And in fact, may have to for an additional year if it's, if the student, for example, is a junior and the additional year is a senior. Absolutely a great law. Plead the law, I'm glad it happens, but all they say is figure out how to pay for it.
Figure out, figure out how to do it within a two percent tax cap.
Within, within two percent tax spending.
And then if you had this, then if you had this other limit attached to that.
Exactly.
So, it sounds like the federal government is making great decisions about our children, which they are, but then they're not figuring out how those decisions are going to be followed.
Well, there's a disconnect. You know, there's, there, there are great things in terms of the states that are doing and implementing and, and some from the federal government. It's just the funding sources are not there.
All right. So, that was all questions or comments, so.
Just one last.
Go ahead.
If the board approves this in two minutes, what I would like to suggest is those who are in the audience and those who are listening, please send this also to our representatives up in Albany and to our governor. And instead of saying, where the board of ed resolves, just say, "I." Just put your name in there.
Taking that time to send.
We, we do send it out.
Yeah, we send it, but I, I'm just asking each of us as individuals. I've already sent this up to them. And all I do is I take this document and I just, where it says the board resolves, I just say, "I, Guy Cohen says."
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, Putnam County Real Property Tax Service Contract as per document one forty-three slash eighteen attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
What this is, the county helps us set up for the election. They give us the list of who's voting and who's not and things like that. They help us. They supply a lot of the documents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Number one, Mr. Ferraro.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items two through seven is presented to the board meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Okay, we have a motion where we're combining some of our teams, which we have done in the past, and this is for next year, for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen year. So, our modified hockey team plays with the Lakeland School, the modified wrestling plays with Lakeland, the modified varsity swimming is with Lakeland, the girls varsity swimming is with Maia Pack, the varsity golf is with Peekskill, the varsity wrestling is with, with, with Howdane, the girls varsity gymnastics is with Lakeland, the varsity indoor track is with Howdane. We're also approving the CSE, CPSC placements. We're approving for eleven employees who cannot change their vacation date, leave without pay, we will not pay them, but they will not be here and we will not, no further penalty. We're approving two people, two staff members who worked with the middle school musical. They, they're called pit musicians. We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list and we're approving additional hour for this staff member who works with the math challenge.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open up to public contribution on anything?
I've, um, we saw the transportation audit, but we haven't had any presentation or discussion about it in public. I think we need to have that happen. It's a monster of a document, but
Yeah.
Somebody should be able to put it through there, right? I think the bottom line is that they, they're suggesting that not a whole lot of input.
And for the latest start.
For the latest start. And if the county does their changes to Beescall Hollow Road, like are supposedly proposed, even better.
That was a good summary, Jill.
Anything else on the board?
Yeah. I, I have one thing. This past Sunday was the opening day for Magma and
Wow, spring is here.
Spring is here. They were, and the program has made, has gone through a few changes, which you could see, the, the program is not only maintaining, it's thriving. And some of the changes are that the, the town parks and rec has helped us with some registration, some other things, so that we're, we're, we're working with them. And also, this district, thank you to the board, has made it a, a special, a, a
A club.
A club, thank you. And, and so, Mr. Baker has, has taken that club over and you could see, you know, you could see the changes, you could see the improvement in, in the quality of the program. Not that it wasn't awesome before, but you could, you could really see it. And we have two new volunteers who are leading, apparent volunteers, Diane O'Rourke and Jen Zimmerman, who are doing a fantastic job replacing Lisa and Amy Deegan and, and Phyllis Conlin, who are still there, but they're not leading it like these, these, as Diane and Jen are doing. And I want to especially thank Natalie because we know that all of the hard work she's doing behind the scenes and with the kids, with our students to, to help them really succeed in their interaction with their, with their young special needs players. So, thank you to all who are making this program even better than it ever has been.
And I just want to add to that, Dave, thank you to the parents who, and to our very own Mr. Smith, who is always there every Sunday. It was really a student and their family-driven program. And it's only in this past year that we added, we made it kind of a school event by making it a club. But it, it's sustained, it's grown, everyone involved feels transformed by being a part of it. So, congratulations to those parents.
Absolutely. And I have to say, our students, Mr. Baker and I met and we talked about the different placements of our students. So, our students were supposed to come over yesterday, but of course, we had a snow day. But the students are going in to meet with their teachers and to see the students in the classroom and how they work, how to develop materials, teaching materials, all kinds of sensory integration work. And they're just learning so much and they're so dedicated, our students. And one of them really wants to be a teacher now and it's just great to watch and see and the connections that our kids are making. It's great.
That's great. Thank you, Dave, for bringing that up. Okay, I'd like now to resolve to convene an executive session to discuss five matters of the employment history of five particular persons and one matter of one particular person that may lead to an, to an appointment, one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, also known as the Taylor Law, two matters of current litigation, and one matter of proposed litigation, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night and happy spring, everybody.